Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Stillwater School Board meeting for April 12th, 2018. Barb, could you please call the roll?
Certainly, Board Chair Lehman.
Here.
Vice Chair Pelletier. Treasurer Pearson.
Here.
Clerk O'Loughlin.
Here.
Director Hepner.
Here.
Director Patachak.
Here.
Director Stivland.
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our district mission, I hand it out, and Director Stivland, if you could read our district mission.
Page two. The mission of Stillwater area public schools in partnership with students, family, and community is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you very much. And Director O'Loughlin, our board goals?
The Stillwater area public schools Board of Education ensures outstanding learning opportunities for the social, emotional, and academic growth of every student in our district through authentic partnerships and meaningful communication with our community, parents, and students. Every decision is made with a commitment to equity for all students and for future generations impacted by our actions. We will provide our stakeholders with regular updates on student achievement along with continual plans to enhance student learning in our district. We will ensure that our systems of management and oversight are clearly defined. And we invite ongoing dialogue and partnership with our community to learn from their knowledge and to enhance learning for our students.
Thank you very much. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda? Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Alright, thank you. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to report out on our open forum speakers from our last board meeting. We had eight speakers that spoke on the topic of dyslexia, and we had a presentation on our literacy curriculum adoption last week, and dyslexia was part of the conversation that we engaged in at the learning session before that. There's a presentation to the board, and although the board voted to approve the literacy adoption, there was also a resolution for us to look at 916 for developing a proposal to have a dyslexia specialist to work with our district. And I know that Director Hepner has been working on that, and we'll be bringing that to you for a reading. We'll continue to work with our parents and families to address the concerns that they have. We also had three speakers who had concerns for class size at Anderson, and we'll be checking Anderson class sizes weekly, as we do every year, and we'll be sharing more details for class size later in the meeting this evening. Ben Davis spoke in support of the bus terminal, and Kristy Mack asked what are the board's priorities, and I just wanted to let the public know, if you haven't been engaged in this process, there are finance work sessions that are coming up, and the board will be learning more at those finance work sessions and then developing priorities to move forward. I also wanted to read a statement about a modified lockdown that we had yesterday at the high school. And the reason I wanted to read this is, first of all, our staff did a wonderful job over there at the high school, but there's a lot of dissension and misinformation, we believe, on social media, and so I wanted to share with you what the school district knew at the time and what we shared with parents. Earlier this week, our high school went into a modified lockdown while police searched for a suspect in the community outside of our school building. At the time of the lockdown, we worked quickly to ensure the safety of our students and staff and to share what information we had available with us to students and families. Because this incident was, and still is part of a police investigation, the only details we have were specific to our school's response. On the afternoon of Tuesday, April 10th, an individual came to Stillwater area high school and was checked at the door, as all of our visitors are. The individual was denied entrance and left the campus. After the individual left the campus, police were notified of a concern involving that individual and advised putting the building into lockdown while they searched the community. When the police indicated the individual was in custody, the lockdown was lifted. At no time on Tuesday was a report or concern that an armed individual is on campus, nor was there information of a threat directed towards Stillwater area high school or any of our students. Specific to this incident, our systems worked as they're designed to, and the staff acted in the manner of which they've been trained. In light of recent events around the nation, though, there's understandably a lot of fear and concern for our kids and for school's safety. As teacher and staff who work in the buildings every day, we all send our own children, nieces, and nephews and friends to our schools, and we feel the concerns as well. The reality is we have many security measures in place at our schools, but nothing is more powerful than our students, staff, and parents being our eyes and ears. We reminded our high school students and families of this on Tuesday, and I'm going to say it again tonight. Keeping our schools safe is everyone's responsibility. If you see something, we need you to say something immediately. If you overhear something, notice strange behaviors, see a concern on social media, please tell a staff member immediately. I also want to remind our community that you can report it online by clicking. There's a button on our website that says "See Something, Say Something," and it's on any of our school or district's websites, so if you have a quick way to give us information. We'll continue to work with our staff, local law enforcement, and members of the community to enhance safety and security of our schools, and just as importantly, to address the mental health needs of all of our kids. Before our next meeting, April 25th, April 25th is Administrative Professional Appreciation Day, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank our staff and acknowledge the importance of what they do for us and our organization. I'd like to have a special thanks to Barb Prue for her commitment to our support for all of our ponies and for our school board. She is here late after many of us leave taking care of things and up early in the morning taking care of the rest of this next day, so I'd really like to appreciate her efforts and the rest of our staff for that. We also have Chris Fahey sent to us a notification that our kids at the middle school were in the Midwest Manufacturing News for April 2018, and this is super tiny print, so I'm going to read a small portion of it, but you can take a look, and we'll get some information online also. Our middle school students learned firsthand about STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, from careers from people who work with them. More than a dozen local professionals, including Tom Hul, who's a Mitsura Masurin Shinyu U.S. Incorporated Director, took part in a STEM event at Stillwater Middle School in Stillwater, Minnesota. Local businesses and organizations provided interactive activities for our students, and students were exposed to creative and problem-solving solutions with the guidance of these STEM mentors. We'd like to thank Chris Fahey for bringing that forward. Mr. Hul said, "We are proud to be part of educating tomorrow's generation about the exciting future and careers available in science, technology, engineering, and math, and we invite the students to visit our 40,000-foot state-of-the-art facility and see all of our machines in action." So I just wanted to share that piece this evening because it's another example of how our community supports our students. And the last thing I have to share tonight is the city of Stillwater is hosting a parade, Stillwater Ponies Champions Parade, and we're going to ask-
Yeah, if I could have Mike Paulina come up. He's a city council member for the city of Stillwater. He's one of the organizers, and if he can just share the background and what's going to occur on Saturday.
Thank you.
Rain, shine, or snow.
Thank you for having me. It's a little different sitting down here in this. I always wondered who sat in my chair, George. Our city council, we've always made an effort of recognizing members of our community for doing something fantastic and bringing positive things to our- things that are happening. And a lot of times, we've had state champions, we recognize state champion track teams and whatever, our ski teams, our soccer teams, or whatever. I always have them come to the city council meeting, we give them a proclamation, thanking them for outstanding effort. I mean, we recognized Scott Christensen when he won Coach of the Year, or whatever, the National Coach of the Year. So it's always important to recognize the members of our community. Well, this year was something special. A lot of- well, I was just thinking, a lot of these guys probably weren't even born. I've been doing this far too long, but in 1995, we had three state championship teams in the fall, and we had the state championship football team, state championship boys soccer team, and state championship boys cross-country team. So they had a parade through downtown Stillwater to recognize those three teams and make it special for those kids. Well, this fall, or this winter, we had something special. We had three female or women sports teams win state championship, the soccer- or not the soccer team, but the Alpine Ski Team, the Nordic Team, and the Gymnastics Team. And the most important thing, the outstanding accomplishment is Jesse Diggins won the Olympics, gold medal. First time ever, a woman cross-country skier, and I think she still might be the only person I know of from Stillwater to win a gold medal. So I had this idea that we honored the men, so why not have the female women's parade of champions through downtown Stillwater? So we had this all planned. The weather doesn't sound too good.
[laughter]
I've been called by the press, and I actually called all the coaches, or I contacted all the coaches, and their opinion is, they're winter sports. Let's go for it. We're the women of winter. So that was the coach's feeling. But I've been telling the press that you can't snow on our parade instead of rain on our parade.
[laughter]
So anyway, the parade's going to be at 10 o'clock. We're meeting at the north end of town by the Zephyr Depot, the old Zephyr Depot. We're going to- I've got the fire trucks lined up. We're going through town, down to Nelson Street, then back to Lowell Park to have a- on the stage at the north end of Lowell Park to have a ceremony with the kids. I've got proclamations from the city of Stillwater. I have proclamations coming from our state legislators, our senators, our representatives. I know our school board is preparing proclamations to recognize all the students. Leo's Malt Shop is donating ice cream for all the kids. Cub Foods is donating all the water for the kids. Our fire department has the fire trucks. Candy Land is doing popcorn for all the kids. Jennifer- I know Jennifer's daughter's sick or whatever. Went to Lake ML Bank, they have a daughter on the team. They're doing this little prize thing for all the kids. One of the neat things is Mr. Lehman's law firm, Mr. Wyden, our other fellow council member, made 1,500 of these gold medals, so all the kids that come to the parade will get a little swag to take home with them in remembrance of the day. So I hope you can come out. It's all set. We're going to be in the snow, and if it's too bad, I've got two places lined up that we can be indoors if we had to. So come out Saturday, 10 o'clock. We'll probably be to the stage by 10:20, and we're hoping to start the presentations at 10:30. So.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Should be a great event.
It'll be fun.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, and just for the board's information, the Dyslexia Resolution we've been working on, it'll be presented to the board at the April 26th meeting, so that's when we will see that resolution. The next on the agenda is the introductory items. We have the student report, and Annabelle?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Annabelle Gregg, and tonight I will be covering both academics and extracurriculars at Stillwater area high school. The perpetual state of winter has left students feeling stuck in a rut as our third quarter continues. Hope for springtime is being cemented with MCA tests, AP test reviews, comprehensive projects, or simply a more deepened knowledge than prior. AP environmental science classes are headed to the Minnesota Zoo tomorrow, where they will be expanding their knowledge on endangered species and having a little fun. Band students are prepping for their spring concerts, one of which is with the world-famous Dallas Brass. It's a 90th anniversary concert of the Stillwater Band Program and a presentation of the program's history. The Spring Wind Symphony Concert will take place a few days prior on April 17th at 7:30 p.m. Tickets for the concert go on sale at April 1st at 8:00 a.m. on showtics4you.com. AP Lit has just started Hamlet along with gearing up for the AP test. AP Government is preparing for the AP test as well and learning about civil rights. Our choir students are preparing to leave for their New York trip. They'll get to perform for a clinician at NYU, see Wicked on Broadway, and sightsee. Enriched English 10 students are finishing up the Poisonwood Bible. Chemistry students today completed a demo lab about water. U.S. History classes are exploring civil rights, while AP Language and Composition students are drafting a research paper on economics in America. Some students from newspaper are headed to San Francisco for a journalism convention. And finally, the 9th grade orchestra is headed to Chicago on Friday. Through this little snapshot, you can see the exciting times that students are having as the end of the year approaches. Though these times may be very stressful, students are looking forward to fun events that coincide with the end of the year. For example, on Friday, April 20th, is the Spring Blood Jive. Students ages 16 or older are presented with an opportunity to save three lives within a regular school day. Students can sign up during lunches starting tomorrow to donate blood the following Friday. I would like to extend an invitation to any school board members or administrators to speak with me after the meeting to sign up and donate. One awesome way to make a positive impact on your community. Looking into the future, our underclassmen have a special opportunity to attend the Spring Formal, which will be held in the pack on April 27th from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. The dance will be mirrored after prom by also having a Great Gatsby theme. Included in the ticket price of $12, students will have access to an unlimited photo booth done by Vicky Weiss Photography, a live DJ, and water stands. There will be concessions available for purchase. Spring coffeehouse additions took place today and will continue into tomorrow. Students from all backgrounds can audition for a slot in our charity showcase. This is a very popular event that takes place on May 4th of 2018. There will be two shows, and tickets will go on sale the week prior during lunch. The following day, May 5th, is prom. Prom tickets go on sale via fee pay. From April 16th to the 20th, it is $40 per person. From the 21st to the 27th, it's $50. 28th to the May 3rd is $60 per person. The Gatsby-themed prom will be held at the Myth Live on Saturday, May 5th, from 7:30 to 11:30 p.m. And finally, student council is working on hosting another movie night. This will be the spring edition, and our fall movie night was a major success, so we're excited to try this again. Movie choices are still being considered, however, High School Musical is a top contender. The movie night is slated to be held on May 26, 2018, on the football field. That is all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Annabelle. Next, we have the district recognition and the high school speech and debate team.
Right. We'd like to welcome Laura Hammond and Cory Quick and any of our students that attended this evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting the Stillwater speech and debate teams here this weekend. Excuse me. We always compete on the weekend. This evening. I'm Laura Hammond, teacher at Stillwater area high school for the past seven years. I am head coach of the speech team, and until this past season, I was also the head coach of the debate team. Joining me tonight are some members of our speech and debate teams. Here, can stand. And Cory Quick, the current head coach of the debate team. Before I turn this over to Cory Quick and a few of the members, I'd like to take a moment to say how very impressed and proud I am of them. I'm a crier, sorry.
I can jump in at any moment.
Last night, five of our speech members qualified for state competition, and one, senior and captain Noah Schraut, qualified for the national championship tournament, which will be held in Florida this summer. Noah's the first Stillwater student to qualify for the national tournament since 1993.
Wow.
We have strong, well-respected teams, both speech and debate. Last night, the head coaches of our section honored me by naming me the 4AA Section Coach of the Year for the second year in a row. Thank you. While I take some personal pride in that award, I know that without these extremely talented students, their supportive parents, some of whom are here tonight, and my mostly voluntary coaching staff, I would not have been selected. My award belongs to all of us. Yes, we have- oh, well, thank you. Yes, we have strong programs, but we could be stronger. Adding the 9th grade this year opened up a great new avenue for our teams to grow. With additional support, we could hire more coaches, attend more tournaments, and win more championships. Minnesota is one of the most competitive speech states in the nation, and Stillwater students, like their competitors at Eastview, at Woodbury, at East Ridge, at Minnetonka, belong at the state contest and at Nationals every year. Our speech and debate programs are not the most visible activities at the high school or in our community, yet there are no activities that better prepare students for college or careers, that demonstrate the importance and power of a person's voice, that empower that student to use it, that invite students to display levels of work ethic, confidence, character, communication skills, and reward them for displaying those essential skills. In these activities, students learn creativity, poise, critical thinking, teamwork, effective research, and articulation, and these are lifelong skills that they will use in all their future endeavors. As your support increases, we can reach more students and continue to build upon the strong foundation that we already have established. Cory Quick, the head coach of debate, would like to say a few words. Excuse me.
Thank you, Laura. I'm Cory Quick, and I've been teaching in the district since the end of the last century.
[laughter]
And I've been really fortunate, sort of late in my career, to be invited to assist in these programs. And I'm continually humbled by working with these students. I'd like to echo a little bit about- I mean, really, as a debate coach, I should argue against what she said now. So the other side of it would be, there is no other side of it. These are remarkable students. I think of two behind me who, the other day, given 30 minutes prepared speeches that they delivered on the topic of how will the fluctuations in the global oil market affect geopolitics in the next 10 years. I'm- in a time when it seems like many people can't articulate their own positions on things, these students can articulate both sides of issues, and they do so confidently and with great poise. These are the leaders. Some of our former debate students end up serving on their local school boards, right, Annabelle?
Yes.
And so, these are wonderful students, and it's been a joy to work with them, and we do look forward to, you know, your continued support. Your recognition means a lot. I think it's important to hear from the students. I think, again, they will speak for themselves. So I'd like to introduce four students who will speak tonight. Leo Montai, Lauren Capra, Grace Luloff, and Noah Schraut, who served as captains in both speech and perhaps in debate this year. So if you four would come up, that would be wonderful.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Noah Schraut. I'm a senior captain on both the debate and the speech team this year. And without a doubt, speech and debate have created some of the most memorable moments that I've had in my high school career. And while all the things that speech and debate have prepared me for life and have just taught me that I've applied to school and just everyday life have been valuable to me, I want to go a little bit deeper into why I love speech and debate. And I really love speech and debate because of the community it fosters. First of all, on our own high school team, we have some of the most dedicated individuals that are actually interested in learning about current issues that affect everyone around the world and domestically. But also, every single Saturday, I get to go with a group of people from different schools that are willing to compete and to talk about these issues in a competitive manner, in a way that they really have to articulate their sides and show their confidence. As a 9th grader, I came into the school with a very low confidence. But through the speech and debate team, I have learned that I can be an outspoken member of the community, and I can make a change. The voice that speech and debate has given me is something that I'm going to carry with me for the rest of my life, and that is something that's invaluable to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Grace. I'm one of the senior speech captains this year, and I can say with complete certainty that speech has been the best part of my high school career. I joined speech as a junior, and before that, I was involved in many theater activities, and I can honestly say that I have gained more from speech as it gave me effective communication skills, and I have truly learned what it means to be a teammate. I work with some of the most incredible kids I have ever met, some of the most dedicated people I have ever met, and none of this would have been possible without the Stillwater speech program. And the confidence I have gained is just immeasurable. It's incredible what this team has done for me and so many others. There's a young woman on our team who came to me a couple days ago and expressed her level of growth. She joined the speech team because she was having trouble giving presentations in class. It really made her nervous, and she was getting poor grades on them. But through the speech and debate team, she no longer hangs her head. She speaks confidently with a loud voice and receives A's on all her presentations. And it's been a truly incredible experience, and I'm forever grateful for this team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lauren Capra. I have been a captain for two years now. I started in 9th grade when I was in junior high. I came over to the high school. And that was probably one of the most scary experiences of my life. I was super shy. I had trouble even talking to people, making eye contact. I joined speech, and I met some of the most incredible people in my life. I learned skills that I will take with me throughout my career, wherever that takes me. And I just want to especially thank Ms. Hammond and Mr. Quick. Mr. Quick has been there since I first got there, and he has dedicated so many hours to working with me every single day after school, and he has taught me skills that I will take with me everywhere I go. And Ms. Hammond is truly an idol, I think, to everybody on the speech team. She's the most impressive woman I have ever met, and she has fought for us since day one, and she's fought to keep the speech program here. She started it, and without her, none of us would be here. We owe her everything. We thank you for recognizing us, and we hope that you support us in the future. This is the most incredible program that Stillwater High School has. It's amazing to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Leo Montai. I'm a senior captain on the debate team. So first, I want to talk about why I think debate's so important for everyone in general to participate in, and I think it really starts with communication. And so, when people join the debate team, we always go over the resolution that we get. So the first resolution that we got for this season was resolved that the United States should require one year of mandatory national service from young Americans. And going from there, we just would have a roundtable discussion, talking about the merits of debating on the affirmative and the negative, because students have to debate on both sides, and they have to formulate and articulate arguments and understand what both sides think, which I think in America today has become kind of a problem, that we don't listen to each other. And so I think debate helps people understand that every argument has a reason for why people use it and employ it, because issues go a lot deeper than we might think. And in the course of a one-hour debate, it's really easy to get caught up on the small details, but when you look at it from a whole, you can see that both sides have quite a bit of merit. But I also want to talk about why I really think debate has been so important, especially in my life. I joined the debate team in 11th grade, and Laura Hammond kind of prompted me into it, as well as my parents. And from the start, I really felt myself communicating better and feeling so much more confident about my articulation. But also, I really started to see the value in school and the class I was taking. I got to finally understand that knowledge is more important for understanding the world around us and synthesizing the things we see versus just a chore that we have to go to and learn in our classes and get a good grade. And I think that with debate, I was finally able to understand how to dissect arguments and understand the things I learned in class so much better because of the critical thinking skills it gave me. And so I want to thank Laura Hammond, of course, and Cory Quick for their coaching on both the speech and debate team, because they've been really integral to who I've become as a person in the last two years. And I want to thank you guys for supporting and hearing us.
Thank you. Chair Lehman? Any comments?
Yes.
Director Patachak?
Could we do this, because I have a feeling some of these underclassmen we're going to see again. But if we could have those in speech and debate who are here, who are seniors, maybe to share what their plans are for next year?
Sure. Would any of the seniors like to share where you're off to next year and what your plans are?
But you have to come to the podium to do that.
Hi again. I'm a senior this year, and I will be attending the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire with a major in either geography or history.
Perfect. Cool.
As I said, I'm Leo Montai, and I'll be most likely attending McAllister College in St. Paul and studying somewhere, something in between.
Hi, I will be attending the University of St. Thomas, and I plan to go into business law.
Great.
While I'm officially undecided, it's between TCU and Wake Forest, and I'll be studying business administration, and I've got about 12 more days to make my decisions. Better get back to thinking.
Well, good luck.
Hi, I'm Adam. I'm going to be going to Hamlin, and I'm going to be studying either international relations or economics.
And I'm Brianna Johnson, and I will be attending University of Wisconsin-Madison starting in chemical engineering.
Anyone else?
I'm Austin Coleman. I'm going to be attending the University of Iowa for psychology.
Anybody else from the... Well, as people know, speech and debate is near and dear to my heart. I debated in high school and debated in college, went to the national tournament, so you'll enjoy that a lot. And it does provide you life skills that you will use in every aspect of college, career, whatever. And so, and you do meet great friends, and traveling on the bus to tournaments on the weekends are fun to do. So, I wish you all the best. We'll continue to support the program. When I was in high school, Stillwater was one of our top competitors. So, it was, it's great to see that it's coming back, because it did have a really strong tradition when I was debating. And so, we will continue to support it. Good luck at Nationals, and we'll be anxious to hear how you do. So, thank you for sharing. I believe we have speakers for open forum. All right. So, before we start open forum, I will read our objectives. If you wish to speak, Stillwater Area School District welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improve learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, the law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversations with speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concerns presented. I would ask, when your name is called, if you could come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and Director O'Loughlin will keep the timer. And the first speaker we have tonight is Sam Dresser. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Sam Dresser. I live in Lake Elmo, 4815 Lilac Place North. And I'm coming here to talk to you about the adoption of a literacy curriculum that you did at the last board meeting. And I have to tell you all that that was a gut punch to the parents that were working with Denise and with the school administration. It really was a gut punch, and I'm going to tell you why. It was a gut punch because that learning session was completely biased, that learning session was hijacked by the administration. As a matter of fact, it was so seriously flawed that it's absolutely unconscionable that it was allowed to actually go on. Because the parent group had communicated and actually served up two of the state's finest dyslexia experts to actually participate in that learning session. And you know that we did, and they were invited, and they had all held their calendars. We, I know all the back-channel communications. I know that they were prepared to be there. I know that they were holding their calendars open. Up until a few days before the learning session, they still hadn't received the invitation. Now, I want to say this. I want to say I really appreciate the thoughtful questions that were asked last week. Sarah Stivland, Director Stivland, you're a big proponent of having parents involved, but this was a gut punch, I have to tell you, that what you got was a one-sided view of the literacy curriculum that you adopted, that you're going to spend all this money on. And I'm here to tell you that you don't know what you're buying. Now, I can appreciate that you rely on experts in order to make your decisions about what you're going to purchase, but I can tell you that, well, March of last year, my wife, Tamara, came home from a meeting with the two experts that delivered that learning session from your school district. After meeting with these two women, Rachel, and, you know, she said, "Who do parents go to in this district if they have a concern about dyslexia?" And they looked at each other, and they said, "Well, we really don't know anything about it. I suppose it would be us." But they didn't know anything about it, and they still don't. Having said that, I want to remind all of you that there are about 1,900 students in this district with dyslexia that you are not teaching well, and they're not reading. Now, do you think that institutions like the Groves Institute, do you think institutions like the Gao Institute, and institutions like Curry Ingram, whom I'm going to visit, and my wife is going to visit upcoming, have just dyslexic students that they're teaching? No, they don't. They have a structured literacy program that teaches all students to read and doesn't leave anybody out. And you have chosen by your vote to leave dyslexic students out. What they're telling you about their quote-unquote "ability" to actually deliver and teach dyslexic students to read is not accurate. It isn't. But you wouldn't know that, because you were prevented from hearing from experts. You don't know that, because they hijacked and sold you, they took almost all of the, I'm going to say, hour, hour and 20 minutes to sell you on their curriculum, and then spent the last 10 or so talking about dyslexia. That learning session you would not have had, weren't it, for the committed parents that insisted that you learn about what you're buying. And Shelley, you were, Director Pearson, you were right on target when you asked the administration. You said, "Now, tell me, now, would a structured literacy program actually teach everyone to read, or most of the students, and they wouldn't need to fall into Tier Two and Tier Three?" Do you remember what the answer was? I do. Go back and look at it. It's disingenuous, and I have to tell you, you have an opportunity to claw that back. Under Robert's rules, you can revisit this. You can move, those of you who are uncomfortable with your decision, you can all move. If you voted for that resolution, you can move to put it back. You can, and you should. This is a sea change in terms of education, in terms of a structured literacy program. And I really thought that the administration, they got way down the road, and I believe they just actually got caught. You guys got caught not really knowing anything about it, and instead of falling on your sword and saying, "Okay, you know, let's go back and revisit it and work with parents, let's find a literacy curriculum that really works for everyone," you didn't do that. You just jammed it down everybody's throat. So, that's what I'm here to tell you. Thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. That's all right. Next speaker is Carl Blondin. Welcome.
Thank you. Carl Blondin, Sunrise Avenue, Stillwater, Minnesota. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent Pontrelli. First, I want to thank our four board members, Tom Lehman, Jennifer Pelletier, Paula O'Loughlin, and George Hepner, for their prudent votes to spend capital funds to invest in a new school bus facility. The intelligent use of capital means that less money in the annual budget will be spent on busing and more money will be spent on learning. Your decision will benefit the students, parents, and taxpayers of our district for many decades to come. Thank you, board members Lehman, Pelletier, O'Loughlin, and Hepner. Unfortunately, the usual voices of dissension and disinformation have been active on social media criticizing the purchase of a new school bus facility. The most persistent of these, 834 Voice Vice President Dr. Ziss Weissberg, to no one's surprise, has been up to his usual practices of conflating and ad hominem attacks. Contrary to Weissberg's false statement, no bond money will be spent on repairing or maintaining school buses. Weissberg falsely stated that closing unneeded elementary buildings has negatively impacted other schools, while the truth is that closing academically and economically inefficient buildings has enhanced the quality of education in all the district's schools. Additionally, one cannot help but notice that Weissberg focuses his attacks on women board members, even though both men and women vote against his wishes. A hint of misogyny, perhaps. While I am on the topic of dishonest and disrespectful social media comments, I should take some time to address local homeschooler Sandy Hayner's recent use of an alleged quotation of Voltaire, which she placed on Director Shelley Pearson's political Facebook page. The quote which Hayner falsely represents is coming from Voltaire reads, "To learn who rules over you, simply find out who you are not allowed to criticize." The problem is, Voltaire never said or wrote those words, nor did he say or write anything similar. More disinformation from the 834 Voice GPS cabal. The man who said this, or something very similar, was Kevin Alfred Strom, a noted white supremacist and neo-Nazi, and a man who has a federal felony conviction for possession of child pornography. Shall we agree a less respectable provenance than Voltaire? It is improper for Ms. Hayner to use Mr. Strom as her authority. While the quote from Strom is not quite as artfully drafted as Hayner's fake Voltaire quote, Strom is unfortunately the author of the idea, an author who is problematic and so distasteful, so abhorrent, that in polite society, we do not quote or paraphrase him as an authority. Of course, no one has silenced Ms. Hayner. She has free rein to criticize and criticize she has. Her intent in paraphrasing Strom was to disparage others and falsely claim victim status for herself, the tactic of a demagogue. Dr. Weissberg and Ms. Hayner are not the only voices of dishonesty and disrespect in our school district. 834 Voice activists DeeDee Armstrong and Andy McCready purposefully mistake the law in order to confuse people and sow dissension. Tina Riley wrongly accuses board members of violating board policies. Directors Patacich and Stivland falsely malign an honest and hard-working district employee for the crass purpose of whipping their political base into a frenzy. 834 Voice is not a voice of reason. It is not the voice of adults. Civilization will only succeed if adults take charge. We need adults who will stand up to the 834 Voice GPS political machine. I urge all citizens to reject the dishonesty and malice of 834 Voice and GPS, and instead embrace voices of reason, honesty, and civility. 834 Voice's closed Facebook site is a roiling cauldron of ill-mannered, profane, and mean-spirited tripe, a hate site. Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Andrea McCready.
Never figure out how that works.
Welcome.
Thank you. Chair Lehman, board members, and Superintendent Pontrelli. My name is Andrea McCready, and I live on Churchill Street West by the hospital. I'm a class of '86 graduate of Stillwater Schools, and I was also a plaintiff in the 834 Voice lawsuit. I want to take a moment to respond to the previous speaker. I want to let you all know that Ziss Weissberg does not exhibit misogynist behavior. That speaker is confused. Now, I'll continue with what I was going to speak about. During the March 29, 2018 board meeting, I listened to the superintendent's report online. I did appreciate that the superintendent responded to at least some of my questions from my two previous open forum speeches on January 18 and on March 8, wherein I referenced a lawsuit settlement document that 834 Voice plaintiffs had written, that a community member had placed on audience chairs at the January 4, 2018 board meeting. Both the community member and now Superintendent Pontrelli have stated that the document was received through a written data request. During my previous open forum speech, I had questioned whether the community member had received this document through the data request process. When my own data request was fulfilled, I compared the document I personally received through the written data request process versus the document that the community member had put on audience chairs, and I have both documents here, and I noticed that the document I received has a Data Practices stamp on it. It's right here, whereas the document that the community member received does not have that stamp. I then asked a friend who had received data from a data request in October 2017, and she also had the Data Practices X stamp on her documents, so I am pointing out this discrepancy. Why is the community member's document lacking the DPA stamp? In my two previous open forum speeches, on January 18 and on March 8, I had requested that if the district considered the lawsuit documents to be non-confidential, that the district provide to the public its mediation settlement proposal points, and also address each point as to whether or not the district will take the action it had proposed and why. I am still waiting for the district's response to my request. The data I received in fulfillment of my data request included 834, District 834's voice, I'm sorry, District 834's response to the 834 Voice settlement offer. 834 Voice had identified several areas of improvement in financial practices. The response from the district shows what they believe is achievable, so I will read what the district had proposed. Number one, the district will revise its policies to create a regular schedule for RFPs every three to five years for the following professional consultants: financial consultant, financial auditor, architects, and lawyers. The schedule may be staggered, but we'll start with a financial consultant. Two, the board action approving these consultants will state publicly the compensation rates. Three, the board will revise its bill-paying practice. All bills to be paid will go to the board for review before they are paid. As we discussed at mediation, we are talking about the typical claims register process. The bills go on the consent agenda, and any board member is free to pull any item off that agenda for further discussion or action. We will also make explicit the policy that all contracts not within the admin's delegated authority must have documented board action to approve and include in the public record the compensation. Four, the board will revise the January organizational resolutions to use plain language and enhance transparency. For example, one current resolution quotes a statute verbatim delegating to the superintendent and business manager the authority to contract for budgeted items up to the amount that does not require competitive bidding under Statute 471.345 Uniform Municipal Contracting Law. We will make it clear that the board has delegated authority to these administrators to contract for the budget-approved items up to $100,000 or whatever the amount a future board elects to delegate. The organizational resolutions appointing the professional consultants will reiterate the compensation rates. The final point is, the board will revise district policy for senior cabinet-level administrators to prohibit outside employment without the superintendent's knowledge and approval. As we discussed at mediation, there are many paid and unpaid consulting, teaching service gigs that senior managers are asked to participate in from time to time. We do not intend to prohibit typical professional activities that enhance their professional life and service to the district. The main concern for the district is the right to know and to make its own informed judgment about whether they are typical professional activities on the one hand, or moonlighting, dividing loyalty activities on the other. As you know, this policy must be perspective-only. We cannot unilaterally change existing. So, I want to know whether the district will be responding to these points, and the school board has taken drastic measures to purportedly save money, but hasn't taken simple steps such as these to protect the financial interests of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Greg Folks. Next speaker is Greg Folks. I'm sure I probably said that wrong.
No, that's close enough.
Thank you.
You answered a lot of things. I have one question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I don't live in the district. I live in the White Bear District. Am I able to?
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Board Superintendent, thanks for having me. I appreciate. I've known, you've been discussing about bringing a strategic plan together, and two of the basic tenets have been, basic life skills, as Superintendent Pontrelli recently wrote an article talking about investing and retirement, et cetera, and strong work ethic. And I think those are two tenets that I certainly support and believe in. I've spent some time with many of you during some of your Portrait of Graduate-type series, and just sharing some thoughts about financial literacy, which I'm certainly definitely behind, and hopefully, one day can be supported in more of our schools. But it's not happening now in our homes, and it's not happening in our school systems. We're not educating our kids early enough or often enough in financial literacy. Yet after attending and watching video of some of your recent board meetings, and last one, I believe, on the budget, I know there's an awful lot of things that you've got on your plate and can sympathize a little bit with what's going on and how you do that. So, another program like financial literacy has to be one of those choices that are made, obviously, in any school district. So perhaps a story I can offer of the importance of financial literacy for two reasons. Number one, I want to keep it top of mind for you and the district. Number two, it's Financial Literacy Month. April's Financial Literacy Month. Last night, I brought my granddaughter, Emma, to the Dome in Stillwater, too. She's on the St. Croix soccer team. I dropped her off. I went over to the Caribou Coffee. It was eight o'clock, no one was there, with the exception of six, what I thought were high school students of Stillwater. I went over to them because I couldn't help myself, and I asked them, you know, I'm a recent grad, like, 60 years ago. I'm Stillwater High School. May I ask you a few questions because I've written a book about financial literacy? And they said, sure. My first question was, what grade are you in? There were six of them. They said 10th grade. I asked them, how many of you work? All of them worked. I asked, how many of you own cars? Two of them owned cars. I asked them, do any of you know what a Roth IRA is? No one had a clue what a Roth IRA is, nor is that atypical of what's going on around our country. My last question was, I didn't want to take their whole night, if you started a Roth or any investment plan, and your teens and you, or your parents, or your grandparents put $10,000 away before you were 20, due to compound interest, how much money might you have? And the first woman said, well, you know, we would like to make a guess, but I don't want to appear stupid. And the woman next to her said, $1 million. And the first woman looked at her and said, well, you are stupid. And I asked the rest of them, and they said between $50,000 and $250,000. Now, the right answer was that between $600 and $1 million if you put that amount of money away before you're 65. I asked my granddaughter about this as we were riding home, and I said, Emma, what do you think of this story? She said, "Emma, no one has taught us or is teaching us about financial literacy." She's 14. She's a right kid, obviously, but she's not out of the ordinary. We need a class." And that blew me away. "We need a class." That blew me away because of all the curriculum needs that are going on in communities, et cetera. So if I can close this, I know District 834 is already one of the best school districts in the state of Minnesota. I grew up here. I know that. I'm honored to be here and talking about this. But if you allow me to help with personal finance for your students, Stillwater can be the best district in the state because no one's doing this right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that concludes open forum tonight. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the school board and will be enacted by one motion and an affirmative vote by a majority of the board members present. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered a separate subject of discussion by the board. So if any board member would like to remove anything, please let me know. The items on the consent agenda tonight are minutes of the March 29th, 2018 school board meeting, the dispersments register from March 23rd through April 5th, 2018, the human resource personnel report, and finally, the 2018-2019 insurance renewal rates. Director Patachik.
Yes, and I don't know if this is the appropriate place to ask or not, but we received this morning, or rather, I got it this afternoon, classroom staffing allocations. Is that in the consent?
I don't believe so. I think it was more for information purposes.
So, we're not going to talk about that tonight?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? All right, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor signify by saying aye, raising your hand. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have two reports tonight. The first is Shadow of a Student, Dr. McDowell.
Thank you, Chair Lehman, School Board, Superintendent Pontrelli.
You're looking for that shadow.
Right? Looking for the shadow. I was making sure that my shadow was here tonight. We wanted to take a moment and share with you a project that we've been working on since February. We've talked a little bit about it. It's Shadow of a Student, and so we thought we would take just a few moments tonight, share with you what we did, and what our plans are moving forward with the information we've gleaned. So exactly what is Shadow of a Student? It's an international challenge. It's organized through the Stanford D-School every year. And why we do it, why educators do it, is that it's not new information, that one of the ways to glean some of the most powerful insights is actually to go into the classroom and experience what our students experience. And so, who does this? Well, it's open to any educators. You sign up, and it puts you on a map, and they collect who's all done it. And this year, what we did is we asked all of our assistant principals, our coordinators, our directors, our executive directors, and our superintendent to all pick a student and get approval with the family and spend a day following that student. And so collectively, the entire group did this. And we were amongst a little over 1,300 educators, 45 states participated this year, and 50 countries. And so what I want to share with you is a short video that kind of captures what the experience was like. And so the video gave you a little taste of what the experience was like, but essentially, what happened is, we asked people to be able to go from bell-to-bell, from door-to-door, from bus stop to bus stop, and do everything that that student does. And so what we did after that is, on April 4th, we brought all the administrators together, and we took about two hours to go through a couple of processes, really, to harvest what are those experiences that people had pre-K through our 12th grade. And we really came up with four areas that we're going to continue to dive into a little bit deeper, and those are the areas of transitions and space usage, resources, and student engagement. And what that leads us to is really what's next. And so as part of the process, the original idea that is expected or is challenged is, take what you've learned and create what's called an immediate hack that you could do in your building as a building administrator or teacher. And so we have some principals that are working on some things that they could try out yet the rest of this year to see if it's something that might work on a larger scale. But on a bigger scale for us, we're going to take, as you can see, all the post-it notes there, we're in the process of taking all those post-it notes, putting them into themes, and using with our school improvement planning process. As Portrait of a Graduate comes together along with World's Best Workforce and our school improvement planning, what a better way to really make sure we're not missing something than to include the things that we learned as we shadowed students throughout this district with all of our administrators. What we would like to do next is to expand that challenge to community members and to all of you. And so next year, what we would really like to do as a Shadow of a Student is see some of you take up the challenge and follow some of our kiddos around that you don't typically hang out with, and experience what a day is like for them. With that, I'll call up Derek Berg, who wants to share just a little bit about his experience. You saw him on the video, and we've asked him just to share a couple of thoughts.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me here tonight. First of all, we certainly recognize that it's healthy for principals, central office administrators to be in classrooms. We're there frequently doing observations. We act as guest readers. We're there watching different student projects, and sometimes we're even substitute teachers within the classrooms. But the Shadow of a Student was really a different twist. Our purpose was different on that day. I wrote down some things that really stood out to me during the Shadow of the Student program, and I was in a kindergarten classroom, and I just noticed that there was lots of doing by kids. There was very little sit and get. The kids were very active, and I thought that was fantastic. They were very collaborative as well. It wasn't a lot of independent work. It was a lot of opportunities for our kids to work with other kids. And also, what stood out to me is, it was an ongoing emphasis on relationships. And again, mind you, I was in a kindergarten class, but even, it was March 9th when I did my Shadow of the Student, and, you know, there's still some conflict on who gets to be first in line and things of that nature. And I was so impressed with our kindergarten teacher, who was proactively addressing things as far as relationships go. It wasn't just something that was taught in the first six weeks of the school year. It is something that is taught in an ongoing fashion. So those are the key things that stood out to me. So, and I'm open for questions, if people had any questions for me as well.
Director Pearson.
Okay, I love this. It's almost my favorite thing you guys have done. But I want to know how, and if some of you want to answer, how you picked your student, and if anything surprised you that you saw that day.
For me, you know, one of the goals was to try to shadow a student from bell-to-bell. So, I actually got on the school bus with my own daughters, and so I picked somebody who was on the bus route as well. And that way, I just felt like I could really embrace the experience. So, that was just one of the key pieces for me. If there's, say, 40 kids on that particular bus route, then I tried to find somebody who was on that bus route so I could take advantage of that experience. You know, there's different humbling things that take place for principals throughout the day, and again, as I mentioned before, it goes beyond shadowing a student. It comes through observations, or guest reading, or acting as a substitute teacher. You know, one of the things that I was humbled by earlier this year, I was in a classroom doing an observation. I was in a first-grade classroom, and very flatly, I had a first grader approach me and looked at me and said, you know, my mom doesn't need to look at the keyboard when she types. And it was just one of those things where, you know, how observant these kids are. And it really got me thinking about, yeah, you know, I've got some skills that I still need to practice and develop. With all the experiences that I've had, I still need to grow and practice and learn some new skills as well. So, through the Shadow of the Student and through some of these other experiences, there's opportunities for us to learn and grow.
Anyone can go to the shadowsstudent.org website. There's a packet on there, and that's what we use to do this. And essentially, the process for picking a student is to define a goal that you want to, through your shadow, and then try to figure out how you can best meet that goal. And so for me, I wanted to experience a student at the high school, a student who had a schedule that didn't include band, or choir, or orchestra, and was also in at least one AP class. And so I figured that would take a different path than a typical path of maybe what my students, or my personal kids are involved in right now because they're involved in that. And it was a great experience. So, everybody chose a different way based on what they wanted to see from a grade level to a building.
Someone else?
Well, yeah, I have a couple.
Director Stivlin?
Thank you. Did you happen to be there on Flex Time Day?
I was not on there during Flex Time Day.
Okay, I was hoping, I was hoping we might get a chance to see if they had any thoughts about, if somebody had experienced, from an outsider's perspective, what was it like to be at Flex Time?
You know, that would have been interesting. Matt Kraft was originally going to be here, and I wonder if he experienced that, but he couldn't be here tonight.
Okay.
But we can find that. I'm sure in all of our post-its and everything, that that'll be there in some way, shape, or form, yeah.
Yeah.
I can tell you that my experience at high school was much similar to Derek's in that I think on the onset, you would think kids would be hesitant to have a shadow, and I had quite the opposite experience. It was, can you come and shadow me? Can you come and shadow me? I mean, our kids in this district really don't mind that, and they like to show what they're doing.
Right. And I think one of the most powerful ways to learn is to teach, right? So in doing this, you're allowing the student to teach you about their life, about their daily life. That's really cool.
That was great.
Of course, they would love that. So I'm just going to ask this really broad and generic question. What was the best part and the worst part of doing this? For both of you.
I think the best part is the most natural answer, is, for me, it got me back into a building for a full day, which is the biggest change from being a teacher and then a principal is, in this job, you don't have the opportunity to be there in an extended period of time with kids. I would say that the hardest part is the exact, the exact opposite of that. It's when you know you have to answer some phone calls, and you've got to leave and try to get back into the groove with that student. That was the most difficult part, but being there was easy, yeah.
Anyone else? Annabelle?
Yeah, I was going to say, my answer really replicates what Bob was saying. The best part was just the excitement of the kids, and they are so eager to share, and they're very proud of the work that they're doing, and that makes me very proud as well. And certainly, the most challenging part is knowing that there's people kind of waiting for you, they're needing you. I guess it's good to be needed, but that was one of the most challenging parts during the day, is just to fully immerse myself into a kindergarten setting, and yet not really be available to others during that time.
Yeah. Cool.
Sorry about that. Annabelle?
After your day at the high school, what would you say was like your favorite part, other than being there, but like your favorite activity that you did, or like way to learn, and something?
favorite activity that you did, or like way to learn, and something that you know doesn't work, or you didn't enjoy the experience as a student?
Sure. I would say my take for our high school students right now, the hardest thing for me was to go from class to class to class and sit. That was tough. By about the third period, we went, oh, my gosh, I've got three more of these, right? So, I mean, you really get into that experience. The best part of the day was actually the downtime, hanging out with, as I started with the student I was shadowing, that became four students, which became four students. And so being a part of that group and just the natural camaraderie of that group, and the laughing and fun that seems to go on between kids at our high school is really healthy. I know that we deal with a lot of stuff, and some challenges percolate to the top often that we talk about. But man, it's a cool experience being a kid in our high school right now. It really is, other than all the sitting. I don't know if you have this, you would have the same experience, but I think it is. I think it's a cool experience.
Thank you.
But you don't get any homework, so.
I did, but I didn't understand how to do it.
Thank you, guys, for doing this and bringing this to us.
Absolutely.
I have a question. Derek, what was the scooter deal? How does that work, and what was it for? And then Dr. McDowell, I want to know, were you surprised when you looked up at the student you were shadowing?
That was the first moment, when he walked into the Pony Center, as I was waiting for him to get there, oh, jeez.
So the scooter experience, our FIED teacher every year sets up an obstacle course within the gymnasium. So kids are doing just a wide variety of things, from rope swings to balance beams to cargo nets. And so this was just one of the activities, as kids go through the different cycles within the gymnasium. So I did a wide variety of things in the gym that day, including the rope swings. That happened to be one that got caught on video, the scooter activity.
Well, I want to thank Superintendent Pontrelli, because, you know, we here deal with a lot of heady issues, and, you know, it was Superintendent Pontrelli who said, you know, this would be a good thing to report to the board on, and it really does hit home on, you know, taking out some of the high-level stuff that we have to deal with, to see how we're effective in the classroom and in the schools, and how we can be more effective and look at it. I was wondering if something that might work in the future would be for the, at least at the elementary level, the principals switch buildings and shadow students in, you know, in different buildings to get a sense of, you know, if you see something different, but something to think about.
That's a great suggestion. We've talked a little bit about how do we get a cycle going where we observe things at different levels, and that'll probably definitely come up as a twist on how do we do this next year within our own group, is that maybe we want to constraint, you can't be at your own level.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Well, thank you again, so.
Thank you.
All right, the final report tonight is the Bridge to Excellence Annual Review, and I know Carissa is out, or her husband is not well, and so we have someone else.
You're kidding?
Doctor Bob.
All right, Chair Lehman, School Board, Superintendent Pontrelli. What Carissa Kieser was going to present on tonight is something that we presented on within the last week, which was kind of the celebration and closing of what has been the Bridge to Excellence strategic planning. And really, what we wanted to do is provide a short overview, reminding people where we've been, how we got to the strategic planning, and then where has that left us, and where do we go from here? So where the strategic plan all began, it actually started, for those that don't know, about five years ago, in the fall of 2012. There were 30 community members, staff, and students that came together, really to meet over three days and try to create what are the dreams, what are the things that we need to do to create the future of Stillwater Schools, even beyond the five years of the strategic plan. So across three days, they had timely debated discussions and created a mission statement, beliefs, and goals of a strategic plan. And this document here, you've seen many times, many of our community members have seen this document many times, it outlines what our strategic plan is in the broadest sense. And if you took all of the words that are on that sheet on the left, and you put them into a Wordle, you would end up with the graphic on the right. And what you see is that the district vision is clear. It's about students first, that word's the largest, first and foremost, and then about learning. Community was central to the plan, and social, emotional, physical support was right in there as well. And so what we move into then is trying to capture what is it about that that we've delivered on since that 2012 meeting? And so here are some highlights of the last five years on what's been delivered on from the Bridge to Excellence. There truly has been a focus on the whole child. We've worked clearly not to perfection yet, but we're working more and more on how we provide more social and emotional needs support to our students pre-K through 12. We've had an emphasis on physical, mental health, and wellness, as you've seen over the last few years, Deb Van Kli present on how that has come to fruition with our wellness policy, the changes in our physical education program, how we're implementing the student advocates and the school psychologists, and our mental health at the high school with the Wellness Center. And then the additional and updated curriculum that's happened, particularly over the last year and a half, with our transition from grade five going up, or grade six going up, rather, and grade nine going up to the high school, and about 11 curriculum packages that had to either be retooled in some way or built from the ground up for classes like success, middle school success in sixth grade, our design and make class, all these classes that over some of our work sessions you've heard about. But those are part of the 11 packages that had to get put in place, most recently, to bring us to then this middle school move and this high school move. What has happened for our students, as you can see there, is we've been able to link more of our support for students with also introducing things like Web, Link Crew, the Building Assets Reducing Risk Program at the high school, Flex Time, Pony Time Advisory Program, Enhancing Our Avid Program, the whole idea of trying to create smaller learning communities for our secondary students. So that middle school program that we went back and forth to try to figure out, how can we get a middle school setup going on, which creates those smaller learning communities for our sixth through eighth grade students? And then at the high school, we've got that ninth grade program where we give a student a common teacher set of language arts, social studies, and science. And then the 10th grade academy for our students who are developing some risks that we know we need to take care of. We also have the Spanish immersion program. If you remember, that ended up at Lake Elmo with the majority of our Spanish-speaking families being down there. And then we've instituted that elementary art program across all elementary schools. John Perry and his team have been working on providing better access to technology throughout the course of this Bridge to Excellence. When we first came into the district, that was one of the things, was we had devices, but accessing technology across buildings was kind of hit or miss. And so the focus, as you've been well a part of over the last 20 months now, is really figuring out how do we support John and his team to get the infrastructure back to what it needs so that we can at least access that technology. And then through the work with Carissa and her amazing staff, it's been figuring out how do we increase communications and community engagement, whether that's through thought exchange, and then the most recent survey to parents on how do we really, how do they really want us to be communicating with them? And of course, there's much, much more, because that strategic plan was enormous. But these are just some of the highlights. So as we shift from the last year of the strategic plan and we move into what's next, we've shared with you, we've shared with our staff, several things and kept you up to date on what's been going on, some of which you've been involved with. So we've had the think tanks. John Perry and myself have run several businesses through several organizations and community groups through think tanks. Those are where we brought in small focus groups of like businesses. So the health community came in, the manufacturing community came in, the tech community came in, small businesses came in, our emergency people came in, and we really asked them questions about where do they see needs in their businesses. You participated in, many of our community has participated and our staff in the thought exchange. That's that online program where questions are asked, and then there's a voting process that goes to try and get to what do people think are the important things that we need to be focusing on? And then things that you've been involved with as a board, both the Portrait of a Graduate Conversation and the Most Likely to Succeed Conversations, those are where we've met with the community, and we've really asked them, what do you think we should start doing, stop doing, improve on, and/or what are the skills, attributes, and experiences that you think students should have through their tenure in our system? And then lastly, we've instituted the Idea Quest this last year. That's brought us things like piloting a one-to-one type program for students who have need at the high school with access to technology. It's brought in thoughts on how do we utilize therapy dogs more in our schools. It has brought in things as simple as our custodian saying, can we figure out how to meet once a month, so we all have a common time to meet and plan. So that's meeting kind of those pinch point things and helping us understand what are some of the needs that we need to pay attention to. And then all of you were involved in, I believe, at least one, if not more, but we did story walls with our staff over the last 20 months, where we started in 1995, kind of worked our way through to try and understand historically, right, it's that whole learn from the past, where have things been, why were decisions made, what was going on that time, what were the inside influences, what were the exterior influences? From all of that, and I won't read all of these, but what we're starting to hear is all of the bullets on the right-hand side. What are those things that are starting to bubble up as the most important things that are common regardless of what group you talk to, whether it's the student groups, whether it's the parent group, the community group? What does that look like to help us develop that portrait of a graduate? Then what also comes into play here is what are we doing to try and focus from our side of it so that we can be prepared for what's next? And those are the things where we're focusing on this design thinking. We just shared the Shadow of a Student, that's part of design thinking process, really trying to figure out how do we gain empathy from the correct consumer based on what it is we're trying to do? And then really focusing in on what's bubbling up in terms of common themes. The most interesting thing to me is that these are not unique to Stillwater. This is kind of common all over, the idea that we need to maintain focus on creativity, collaboration, critical thinking, communication. However, what we know here that we can't lose is this idea of self-awareness. We need our kids to really understand and be self-aware of who they are. Some things that we've been doing, partnering with Optum Health, they're helping us understand how to implement things like the Idea Quest and really dive into how to do things differently with their tools, because that's what they do for United Health, and they have a philanthropic arm out to education. We've talked to you a couple of times about our work with Stanford Design School, they're coming out this summer for our conference that we're holding and running a two-day design workshop. And then we continue our partnership with EdLeader 21, and we've increased our partnership and kind of coalitions with local organizations like Lakeview Health with the Wellness Policy, Youth Services Bureau, Family Means, and the like, to make sure that we're staying connected. That leads us to adaptive planning, which I'm not going to go through the whole process, but really where we're at are the top two circles on here, which is we're at a point in this process where we're evaluating and assessing our needs. So as you move from one strategic planning process into the next, it isn't that you just start all over, but we need to understand what's working, what's not working, what's working well, what do we keep, what don't we keep? And then for the stuff that we keep, how do we make sure we're supporting that and making it better, making it the next iteration of what's going on? And then the second circle there is really learning what stakeholders want for their students, and so that goes back to the previous slide of the think tanks and the community conversations and the thought exchange and all of that. What moves next then is the work of deciding and agreeing upon what a Portrait of a Graduate is, and then dovetailing that with the World's Best Workforce, because we need to make sure that we're giving our buildings enough direction so that they can do their school improvement planning in a way that aligns with this. Because in the end, it all comes down to what are teachers able to do and develop as actions in their classrooms that links to everything else? And that's really what we need to be able to do for them and support them in that instructional framework. So with this last slide, the quotes on here, as you read through the quotes, the original strategic planning team wrapped up their first session, so I'll take you back to 2012, "by writing a narrative of what they hoped and dreamed the district would look like in five years." So now we're there. These are their thoughts, and I'll give you a couple seconds to read the thoughts, and then I'm going to show you a video that we've shown before, but I think now with context and after reading these thoughts, the video really captures what this group in 2012 really felt they were after in terms of what Stillwater Schools might look like in 2018.
It is just an unbelievable experience and advantage that we're giving to kids.
And so with that, I'll conclude this presentation. I do have to say, I was thinking during the video, it's kind of cool to stand up here at two presentations and all we do is talk about kids, right? That was fun.
Well, I, along with Director Stivlin, attended the final get-together and saw this, and for me, it was great to have people come back together. It's hard to believe it was that long ago that we did this, and just even seeing the word spark, because I remember that was the kind of the key phrase back then, but how we are moving in a positive direction. And so it was great. Director Stivlin, I don't know what your takeaway was, but I enjoyed it immensely, and I know that the people who were there really felt that what they had done was something important, and we're happy to see a lot of it being implemented, because I think when we all got together, that was the hope, was that we were going to make a difference. And I know that the people I talked to, because we kind of split up into small groups at some point, they were all very positive. So that makes a lot of us feel really good, so.
Yeah. Could I say something today?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. I wanted to say a little bit more about that process, because I think you mentioned, and that was before you were here, is that correct?
That's correct.
That process in 2012? So the really cool thing about it was, it started out with that group of 30. They defined, like, I think it was 10 specific areas of focus. Then there was this one night where they had a presentation of what the 10 areas were going to be, and literally hundreds of people showed up to spend time thinking about and pick one of those areas. Each of those 10 areas had at least 20 to 30 people, 40 people in some cases, who were going to spend time focusing on that one area. And they met for months and months and months. And I remember, I don't know if you remember this, George, you and I were in the same group. You were there.
I was in Jim Glatch's group.
I was in Jim Glatch's group. Remember that.
And we just really dug deep into those specific areas. And I know one of them was the health and wellness, the fitness and wellness piece, and we ended up with this incredible wellness policy that's winning awards and made such an impact on our students. I mean, I know there's a lot of them too, but that's just one that comes to mind. The social-emotional piece became such a big part of this process, I think, because we did do that process in that way, and it just came up in so many different areas. And I don't know, in some ways, I feel like the process was, and sometimes it felt a little too much, it was overwhelming, but in the end, I think we ended up with something that felt very, very authentic, and the people who had been involved in it really felt like their perspective was actually in that final document somehow. It's just like, it was there, you know? That presence was there. And I just think that, I wanted to point that out tonight, because as we go forward with the next process, as we go to try to figure out how to replace this one with our next strategic plan, I just think that's a really important piece, that we make sure that we have the words and phrases in there that truly, that ring true, that are authentic, they have meaning, they inspire us, they motivate us. I feel like when you read it, you kind of get a sense, like, this is who we are, this is what we care about, this is what we fight for, this is what we love. And so, I think, I love this process. I think it's really cool, because I think it really can have the power to change and make amazing things happen. And yeah, so, I look forward to that. I think we're going to be meeting on Monday to spend a little bit of time to dig into some of the data that we have and try to figure out how to make sense of it all.
Yep. Thanks for sharing.
Director Happner. Just back to that slide that had the priorities moving forward, whether it was the Portrait of the Graduate Conversations or the Think Tanks, people were, I guess it was easy for them to come up with open-mindedness, or written-verbal communication skills, or basic life skills. They came up with very general statements. I think the trick is going to be getting the staff to take the idea of basic life skills and turning that into, what do I do in my classroom day-to-day? Mr. Fauks mentioned earlier, the financial literacy. Well, many would say that's a basic life skill, so how do you move that into the classroom? Earlier, when Ms. Hammond and Mr. Quick were here, they talked about verbal communication skills, obviously, but it's a fairly small group of students. How do we expand that for those kids and for everybody else who may go through high school and not have to give a speech or a presentation? I mean, it's taking these things, which we heard over and over again, and then allowing the staff to develop ways to bring these general things down to specific classroom ideas.
And that's where I jump to this slide here. What's in your packet but can't read on the board here is, the people in the audience, the stuff that's off to the right there is intended to do just that. Director Happner, we have a 5D instructional framework out of the University of Washington that we've been using for five years now that we're really diving back into with all of our staff. And that's where it becomes very important that, between the Portrait of a Graduate and the development of what are those goals for World's Best Workforce, that there's an alignment between what does the staff feel needs to be in place in order to do two things? Meet the goals of that World's Best Workforce and the Portrait of a Graduate piece, as well as be able to do what is instructionally best practice with those kids. And we need to keep that aligned. And that's the beauty of where we're at in this process, is we kind of have a big direction based on the last five years, and now's the time to evaluate, like I said, evaluate, retool it if we need to, but don't throw everything out. If it's still working, we need to keep it. If it's still important, we need to keep it. Now's the time where we take it, and the next iteration is to create all or more of the arrows going in the same direction. Because what we do know is that we need to keep things aligned for our teachers, because that's what helps them stay focused on keeping the main thing the main thing. And when we have a gazillion things to try and pay attention to or that we can't fully support, then that's where things start going in different directions, because we haven't kept that alignment. So, I think we're getting closer, and I think now this next iteration will get us even one step closer to doing that.
I think one more thing I'd like to comment on, that, for instance, what Greg was talking about with the financial literacy, or some people in groups have said citizenship, or they've had more specific things, they aren't lost, we still have all that information as we go through this. These are, you know, these are over 2,000 people giving the information to us. So, it's those, it is those more general categories, and then we'll have to dig down more deeply into it and say, okay, what are the themes again then under that? So, there's that piece. And then, back at that adaptive planning, the graph or the photo there, when you look at the bottom right-hand circle, what happens in the classroom? None of the rest of it matters unless we figure out and make sure that our teachers understand, and this is their work about what needs to happen in the classroom. And so, that's what we're really being intentional about, having principals working with our teachers, and when we develop that how-to, that their voices are heard, because they are doing a lot of it in their classrooms already, so how do we just keep that aligned for them going forward?
Can you touch upon, because Director Stivlin brought it up, we are having a meeting on Monday to continue this dialogue. Can you, just because the public is watching this and people in the audience, what they can expect to see on Monday?
Sure. We'll actually be going through many of the steps that you see appear with the adaptive planning process and just talking about what all the input has been, what the themes have been coming forward, looking at our World's Best Workforce and the work that you have there. Our work now is really taking all of these pieces and trying to make sense for our community so that they see their words, thoughts, and feelings from the Portrait of a Graduate kind of as an umbrella, and then underneath that, what's the World's Best Workforce, which the board is working on and making those goals? And then, we take the goals from the World's Best Workforce and the strategies we develop for that will align with the strategies under the themes over here. So, it's a deep dive into some of the documents that we've been preparing that hopefully communicate what our public is asking for.
Great. Thank you. Director Patachek.
Well, as a former curriculum director, I'll tell you, the challenge many times is not to add good things, because I think there's a lot of nodding and bobbing, and people are saying, oh, yes, this would be nice. But I learned in basic economics a long time ago, wants are unlimited, resources are limited, and that's a challenge. I have served places as a curriculum director. Every time we added something, guess what? We had to take something out. So, I mean, and classroom teachers do that all the time as well. So, again, it's a beautiful wish list, but like I said, sometimes resources are limited as well.
That's why it pairs nicely with the priorities conversations that we're having with you as a board right now, because that's really, that's really where those two dovetail together, is what can, what do we keep? What don't we keep? What's important? What's not as important? And what can we do short-term? What can we do long-term? What's sustainable? What's feasible? What's equitable?
Director Lachlan.
No, I was just going to say that I look forward to hearing more about the work of the Community Engagement Team, because I think the upcoming World's Best Workforce Advisory Council is going to be such a tremendous opportunity to leverage the viewpoints of the community, and I'm really forward to, and I'm sure the committee's on it, just, you know, having the most diverse range of perspectives that we can have to yield the strongest product. And, you know, everything from class to linguistics to, you know, whether or not they have children in the school system or whatnot, but so that we can hear new voices, so that we can yield different outputs. I think sometimes we often have the same voices at the table, and it'd be great to have, to really open that up and expand that, and I think that's just going to make this product and this process even stronger, so.
And that's part of the reason why we're suggesting, Superintendent Pontrelli and I are suggesting, that it's really an adaptive strategic planning process, because as you review the World's Best Workforce every year, there might be tweaks and changes to it that you want to make, where a traditional strategic planning process would have you do what you did in 2012, and you try to stick right to that all the way up to the end, where this now dovetailed with World's Best Workforce and what might change and evolve as a portrait of a graduate allows you, or it allows you the opportunity to come back to it every year and say, while this is our goal, our end in mind, maybe we need to tweak it a little bit here, tweak it a little bit here, and not be rigid, because we do have a big, we do have a great base based on this first strategic plan of what we think's important and where we want to go.
Anyone else?
I just have one comment. Was it Chris and her team that did that video?
Yes.
Please tell them again. It's just so great. I mean.
They're a great team.
So much happening in there, but it's just great.
They're a great team. We're lucky to have them.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have no action items tonight, so we're going to move on to the Board Member Reports. The Board Chair reported, I have a couple of items. One, I want to remind the board as well as the community that the Partnership Plan, Partnership Party is next Friday, April 20th. It's at the JX Event Center in Stillwater. It starts at 5:30. Lot of great auction items, and again, this is an important fundraising event for the Partnership Plan, which benefits all of our schools and our communities, so I would encourage everyone, if they have not already signed up, please do so. And you can do so online, and I look forward to seeing as many of you as can appear and attend. So, the other thing is, as I indicated, on Monday, April 16th, we have a board learning session to continue this strategic planning process. And then, also, on April 18th, for board members, you received an invitation from 916 to tour Pankalo, and make sure if you want to do that, to let Barb know so that they can let the district people at 916 know that you're coming. So, I know Mike, you RSVP'd, I have RSVP'd, so if any other board members can join us at that center. Again, it's, as Mike talked about, it's a great facility for students in our district, and so, I'm looking forward to it. I was not able to tour it when it initially opened, so it's always something I've wanted to do. So, with that, I'm going to switch over to Board Member Reports, and why don't I start down here with you, Director Stivlin?
Okay. I have a few things. So, in addition to the Partnership Plan Gala, we have coming up on May 4th at the Lake Elmo Event Center. The Youth Service Bureau is also having a gala, and that is also an excellent cause. They have really, really been outstanding partners, and they do a lot of really great things for our students, so would encourage everyone to go to that. I had a question. I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask, but are we going to be having the mental health presentation at some point? Is that coming?
Yeah, it's rescheduled, and while you talk, I'll tell you.
Okay. Good. I know we had a snow, you know, it was a snowstorm day, and we had to cancel, and I just haven't heard, so.
Snowstorm day? Who's heard of that?
Mental health group.
Like, the community conversation was going to be giving some feedback to the district, or, you know, it was going to be kind of like.
Right. Chris usually puts out an invite to everybody, so I'm not sure if that's happened. Okay. So, it's Tuesday, April 24th.
Okay.
At 6:00 PM at Oak Glen.
Okay.
Thanks for asking.
April 24th. Okay.
At Oak Glen.
At Oak Glen.
Yep.
And you said 6:00 PM?
Correct.
Okay. Good. Oh, I'm glad I asked. Okay. And then, let's see, I'm going to be going to the AMSD's meeting tomorrow. I'm planning on going. I'm not sure who else. I think Director Patachek. And I am the representative for MSHSL. I'm going to be going to my first meeting next Wednesday, so I'll report back. This is very new to me, so I'm kind of excited to learn.
Got to tell people what it stands for.
MSHSL? Oh, Minnesota State High School League. I do know that.
Good start.
And then, I just want to put a shout out. For about seven or eight years, I was involved with the High School All-Night Grad Party, and it's a very, very fun event. I would highly recommend, you know, if you can volunteer, you should, because it's really fun. You get to stay up all night with a bunch of kids who just graduated. I mean, what could be more fun than that? And I have been, I'm no longer involved with that organization, but I have heard from some of the people that are, that they are really looking for volunteers in pretty much all areas. There's casino, there's security, there's kitchen, there's entertainment, there's all kinds of fun things you can do. So, I want to just point out that there is a website that you can go to, you can learn more about it, and you can sign up there to be a volunteer, or you can donate too, also to the cause, at sahsgradparty.com. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Director Happner.
Went to Bye Bye Birdie on Sunday afternoon. It was probably about 98% filled in the auditorium. I thought with the Masters Tournament going on, that was a pretty good ratio. It was outstanding. I think it was right up there with Footloose and Grease and the other ones. They do a terrific job. It's amazing how talented some of these high school kids are. I've seen, you know, community theater and seen a couple of plays on Broadway, but these are fantastic, given what the sets they have to work with and things like that. Also, a thank you to, I think it was Edina High School and Robinsdale Armstrong. Apparently, they share their costumes and sets and stuff like that. It's just, they got credit here for their generosity and sharing their time, talent, and work with the production, so thank you to Edina and Robinsdale Armstrong, and I'm sure we help other theaters as well, but fantastic production. And then, the other thing is, I left at your seats, Dollars for Dreams. If you remember when Kristin Carter was here a couple of board meetings ago, and they just had their second anniversary. In two years, they've lent about $10,000, 29 loans to 19 countries on five continents. And if you don't want to give blood, this is another way you can.
You should do both.
Well, you can do both, yeah, that's true. But their goal is to make the world a better place by helping people escape the poverty cycle. I don't know if the blood drive does that exactly, but.
You never know.
This is a, you know, all-student-driven kind of thing, so if you have a few extra dollars, send it their way and give blood if you have time and you're not taking other medications, I guess.
Oh, already laying the excuse down. Director Pearson.
Thank you. I attended the Community Education Advisory Committee meeting on Tuesday, and they are looking at their preliminary budget for next year, and they're doing a great job with it. They've had a lot come at them this year with the PAC, and PAC's doing really well. As all of you know, when you've been up there, that it's busy all the time, and they've had a lot of work to do with it, but they are, their budget is looking good, their fund balance is looking good, and it's a great group of people. And then, I think for, in Director Pelletier's absence, I'll just quickly share that the Community Engagement Working Group has been meeting, and we got a lot of great applicants for the World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee, and we're working through the names, a lot of common ones that we agree on, and just have to work on a few more to make sure we're getting a good, that diverse perspective, but it's been good.
Thank you very much. Director Patachek.
Yeah, a couple of things. Number one, this is in part of my talking points from our last 916 meeting, but I was disappointed that, I think I had mentioned in this group, that they were attempting to get permission to build a mental health facility in Forest Lake, and it failed to pass three to two to alter it. And it's unfortunate. The facility would have been designed for kids from seven to 17. It's not like kids would have been in that facility long-term, but many of our kids, sometimes depression, autism, other things require immediate mental health and treatment. And it would have created 150 jobs in that community. One of the hard things to replicate elsewhere, too, it was going to be in partnership with a horse farm, and so, it was trying to build a connection with those kids. Again, I respect the, those who voted and voted against it, but I also think it was a unique opportunity. We still, as a 916 organization, will partner wherever it ends up, and they do have a Plan B, which they'll try to locate as close as they can to the metro area. They already have a facility. They already have a facility like this in the Duluth area, but there's some big, big needs in the metro area that aren't being met. So that part was a little bit disappointing. A couple of other things from the last 916 meeting, which actually was before our last, our last board meeting, is number one, we had a contingency of actually attorneys come to visit us and that was John Chai, who, from Ramsey County Attorney, Scott Williams, Ramsey County Deputy Manager for Safety and Justice, Ben Rosine, who's actually a Stillwater resident and a Ramsey County Assistant Attorney, and then Ramsey County Commissioner by the name of Tony Carter. And what they did is they gave us about an hour-long presentation on their efforts to develop a new referral system. And the big thing is it tries to be proactive and identify needy kids who need some support before they become part of the juvenile system. But many of those kids, unfortunately, as Paula can attest to, the odds are stacked against them. And so this was a proactive kind of thing and we look forward to the possibility of 916 partnering with them. Then I was glad to hear Chair Lehman mention the Pankalo Visit, which is a new elementary center for probably some of our most challenged kids in 916 areas, which is actually 14 school districts. But this one is designed particularly for the southern part of that consortium. And then the third thing I just want to mention there is that the school board for 916 voted to reduce four positions, not four total positions. They were part-time and due to enrollments, they were eliminated and they made up something like 1.3 FTEs. So I have one other item, but I'll wait till-
Okay. Director Lockman.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. On the April 10th, just a couple of days ago, my family and I attended a screening of Screenagers at Oakland Middle School. And I believe there's also going to be a showing coming up at Stillwater Middle School. I'm not sure of the date. But for those of you who haven't seen it, it is such a well-done documentary talking about trying to navigate through the digital age with teenagers and, you know, this is something that my husband and I, to be honest, are struggling mightily with ourselves, both with a 13-year-old boy and a 16-year-old daughter, that the social media landscape is often difficult for us to stay one step ahead and just to make sure that they're engaging in a really safe and healthy way. And so it was standing room only, which to me really said that there's a desire and a thirst out there for people to know more and so many students that were there as well. And had a chance to, afterwards, there was a panel and I just want to thank Dr. Crosby Schmidt from Central Pediatrics, Deputy Erickson, she is Washington County Sheriff and also the SRO at Oakland Middle School, Erica Fisher, she is both a teacher and a parent at Oakland Middle School, and Rachel Larson from our district. And all four of them were able to give insight and their perspective in different ways of how to support and keep our children safe as it relates to digital literacy. And next week at Oakland, mark your calendars, Tuesday, April 17th at 6 o'clock at Oakland in the auditorium, is Where's My Phone? Phone Addiction. And again, parents, guardians and youth are invited to attend and I look forward to, again, a wealth of information and I'm not sure if there's going to be a panel after that one, but this is, the Screenagers was in partnership with the Youth Service Bureau and they've just been such a tremendous resource in our community and just really grateful for the space that they provided for families to be able to talk about this really important issue. Let's see, the other thing I wanted to mention is some of you who are on the fellow board members on the MSBA Listserve got an email about the Trust Edge for School Districts, that workshop at the end of the month in St. Peter. And as I was reading about the workshop, it just got me to thinking about how we, as a board, can really start to cultivate trust and, you know, there's been some talks, maybe not as many as we would like, but some talks about how we are going to move forward as a district. And I just, you know, I really believe that the fullest expression of our board work as a collective really happens when we are all together, all seven of us. And all of our viewpoints and our opinions and the discourse that we can have as a unit is really rich. And I have received several emails from community members about a couple of recent Facebook posts online. I myself am no longer on Facebook, but they were sent to me and even though I'm not on Facebook, I'm not naive to the impact, the material impact that social media has given my, just talk about the Screenagers. And so I just want to extend an invitation to my fellow board members that when you have an issue that is related to the board, please, please bring it to the board table so that all of us can discuss and we can talk and it gives everyone an opportunity to weigh in. There were some things said in these posts that were really strong, dare I say accusations and things and a lot of information that really has had material impact on our administration, on our board and ultimately on our students because it's just taking away resources that and time that needs to be spent on our students. And instead, we had to do a lot of triage, myself included, trying to respond to some of this information. So, and the first one to say that I'm a proponent of free speech, absolutely. I don't take umbrage with what was said. I take umbrage that it wasn't brought to the board table because when we're talking about district issues with our board hat on, which it always is in the community, I think that all of us deserve that opportunity to be able to deliberate so that we can really engage honestly and truthfully with one another. So that's my invitation. And Chair Lehman, I know we've talked about a retreat in the past and maybe that's something that we can talk about in terms of board culture and really trying to establish and foster and facilitate that sense of trust.
And yeah, maybe just to follow up on that, I am more than happy to have a retreat. I've spoken to Maggie Wallner because I think the retreat needs to allow us to have free discourse amongst all of us. Other districts have done this. And so she's going to be providing me an opinion as to what the parameters would be relative to the ability to close that meeting. And so I will share her report and also ask if there is a consensus on a day that we can set that up. And I think it would be helpful as well, but I will defer, obviously, to the majority when that comes down the pipe. So look for that in an upcoming email from me as soon as I receive the information from district legal counsel on that. Next, we have working group reports. Any working group reports tonight?
Sorry, I went ahead.
Oh, no, that's all right.
I already did it early.
You can repeat it.
I did it during my board member report. Sorry.
No.
So we, again, start with you, Director Stivlin. Did you have a working group report?
Well, I'll just say that the policy working group did meet this morning and we made a lot of headway. I think we went through like one or two policies. But they're good ones and I'll let our chair of that subcommittee talk. I'm sure George has more he can say.
It was our third meeting. We're working through the 200s. There are 19 policies in the 200s.
You sound like a man who's enjoying it.
Yeah, I love it. Love every single minute of it. But as Sarah said, I think we got through two of those 19 this morning. Maggie Wallner is weighing in as we begin our work on each policy and our intent is to bring them 80% complete and we'll get there. However, not wanting to wait, there is one thing that we talked about today, based on Policy 206, which is currently titled, Complaints About Persons at School Board Meetings and Data Privacy Considerations. We will be recommending to Chair Lehman and Superintendent Pontrelli that we add an agenda item to the April 26th board meeting. This item will request a change to open forum prologue language to include the following. Personal attacks by anyone addressing the school board are unacceptable. Persistence in such remarks by an individual shall terminate that person's privilege to address the school board. And this is actually going to be brought forward as part of Policy 206. And part of our discussion this morning was, well, if it's part of a policy, why wouldn't we have it in open, as part of the open forum prologue language sooner rather than later? So I will be sending that request to you and to Superintendent and hopefully we can get it on the agenda for April 26th and have it as an action item. We just thought if it's open forum language, we shouldn't need to go through a first reading and a second reading. We ought to be able to just decide, we're not really changing anything, we're just adding that statement. So that'll be coming two weeks down the line.
And will you, do you want that as an action item then?
Well, I'm guessing that's what it would have to be because I think when we initially had the language that we have now for open forum, I think it was an action item at the time.
Could I just end?
Sure.
I can't remember, Barb, but I thought we said maybe we would have it as a report first and then have a vote the following meeting? Is that so that people could have time to think about it or?
That was the process for going through the policies?
So we don't need to-
As I remember the discussion this morning, it was for changing what the board chair reads before open forum and adding that piece in there and you were going to bring it to the full board for discussion and vote on the 26th?
That's right. So we will see the new wording before the meeting. We'll look it over. If anybody has any concerns, we can talk about it. You can bring that, raise that up ahead of time.
So we could do it as a report and then also as an action item?
Yeah, I think so.
Good.
Yeah, it's not a big change, but I think it will make a difference in-
Well, you're going to send something formally so we can, I'll never remember, so. Okay, great. Thank you. Director Pearson?
I already went.
You don't want to repeat it?
No.
Director Patachek?
Yes, I had something I wanted to share and I was so excited about it, I shared with a few board members when I came in. I had the pleasure this morning of attending a presentation at Century College. They're celebrating their 50th anniversary and they brought a fellow in, a Stanford guy. So I thought about that. And he wrote a book. His name is Scott Hartley and the book is entitled, The Fuzzy and the Techie. So John, you would enjoy this, I think immensely. And then sort of the subtitle is, Why the Liberal Arts Will Rule the Digital World. So it's got a little bit of a catch there. But he came, he actually flew in from New York, made a presentation, probably about 45 minutes to an hour with questions, but this is kind of the lead on it, is that, and I'll just read a paragraph or so. "A leading venture capitalist offers surprising revelations on who will be driving innovation in the years to come." Scott Hartley first heard the term fuzzy and techie while studying political science at Stanford University. And this may apply to some people in this room. If you majored in the humanities or social sciences, you were a fuzzy. If you majored in the computer or hard sciences, you were a techie. This informal division has quietly found its way into a default assumption that has mistakenly led the business world for decades. It's the techies who drive innovation. But in this brilliantly contrarian book, Hartley reveals the culture intuitive reality of business today. It's actually the fuzzies, not the techies, who are playing the key roles in developing the most creative and successful new business ideas. So it was a fascinating presentation. The book, I believe, is relatively new out there. It did get an award from the Financial Times and it's, I haven't read the book, but I heard his presentation and it was, it was way, way above what I expected when I went there in terms of what I got out of it. So it might be worth looking at. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing. Anything further, Director Lockman?
Yes, the finance working group met, I believe it was yesterday morning? Because policy was this morning, right? Okay, yes. So yes, yesterday morning, Director Pelletier, Director Pearson and joined by Superintendent Pontrelli and Director Holheisel. And this was based on feedback. Chair Lehman had asked us to come up with a series of work sessions, learning sessions around finance. And so we had talked about what that, what topic, each topic might look like for each session. And so Barb, thank you for posting the dates. So the first meeting will be on Wednesday, April 18th, or I'm sorry, 16th? I can't read my reading here. 18th, I'm sorry, Wednesday, April 18th. From 6:00 to 7:30, that will be at Central Services, May 3rd and then May 29th, same time, 6:00 to 7:30 PM, Central Services. And then June 7th. And that one will be actually before the board meeting, so that will be held here and that one will be from 4:00 to 5:30. And so-
It won't be held here, though. It'll be at Central Services.
Yeah. Oh, at Central? Okay.
I think there's a half hour break in there or something.
Okay.
So we can videotape it because if we sit up here, we can't-
Oh, excellent. Okay, thank you very much for that correction. Thank you. So the first meeting on Wednesday, we're going to take a look at just the historical timeline so we can have some shared understanding just around the trajectory of the budget and how the ups and flows and the implications of some of the cuts and the various revenues over the last decade or so. And so we'll look at that. And then down the line, we'll be looking at levies, different kinds and again, what they mean and how they impact the public and it may affect a vote that we may or may not take. Down the line around OPEB, so we'll be having that conversation, looking at enrollment, but really try to have some, like I said, common language and shared understanding about the budget, which we are responsible for as a whole, and the pertinent and salient timelines and the things that we as a board need to be aware of and kind of where our role fits with that in regards to Director Holheisel's work.
Yeah, I think, oh, go ahead.
Can you just clarify? I was writing down, what are the four topics?
So we're doing a historical timeline.
Levies.
We're looking at levies, enrollment.
Oh, enrollment was the last one?
We're going to look at that in one of the topics.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that.
And then the last one, just I know there had been some conversation and questions about, you know, where and when does the board need to take action? When do we discuss preliminary budget? When do we approve? So just having some more, you know, that solidified so that people have a clear understanding of our role and how it intersects with Director Holheisel's work.
So a question I have, are those the topics that'll be spread out over those four dates?
Correct. I will send you each an update-
Okay.
With more details.
Well, you know, I think the public doesn't really realize what goes on behind the scenes, so I want to thank these committees. Takes a lot of time to do this and so it makes all of our jobs a lot easier and so again, I appreciate all the hard work. So with that, seeing no other business before us, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Interesting.